I'd like to call the regular meeting of the planning commission to order. I guess I gotta get on that.
How does it say wait?
Wait, wait. Okay. Do over. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the planning commission to order. I'd like to point out that this meeting is being hosted through livestream on the city's website and by teleconference for public comment. Due to the structure of this meeting, I'd like to remind the planning commission to have their microphones turned on in position so the audience can hear you. Mr. Kane, would you please have a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Leventhal?
Here.
Commissioner Beansterfer?
Here.
Vice Chair Van Arsdale?
Here.
And Chair John Worth is absent with notice.
Please turn me in the flight salute and the speech. Lord, as we move towards healing and comfort for our country, for our cities, for ourselves, please keep us mindful of the things we've gone through and things that others have gone through, be sensitive and compassionate and caring. Help us to make good decisions in our city planning commission meetings and be ever mindful of the good that is to come of it. Amen. Good allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number 4A for the approval of amendments. I think item number four for the approval of the amendments of the March 16th meeting. Does the commission have any changes or corrections or additions to these minutes of March 16th?
No.
But could I adjourn the motion to approve?
I'd like to make motion to approve the minutes from the planning commission meeting of April 6, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay. Keep well. Okay. Thank you. So, public comment period. To accommodate public comment, we made temporary changes to this part of our agenda and were necessitated to comply with COVID-19 directions. This is a temporary, there is a temporary two-minute per person time limit for all general public comments on non-public hearing items. All who wish to speak, including commissioners and staff, need to be recognized by the chair before speaking. Members of the public shall comply with the adopted rules of the Torum Resolution 4545, a copy of which can be requested through the city clerk's office. You may fill out a form and submit your comments online at www.hemetca.gov/councilmemberblog. That might be a different, would that be correct?
Counsel chamber.
So, I'm sorry. Counsel chamber, right. Submittals must be done before 2:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Those of you who wish to join by teleconference, you may join by calling 888-585-9006 and when prompted dial 743-463-604. You will be asked for your name before speaking. As a reminder, if you are joining by teleconference, please mute your phone to prevent noise interference until you are given time to provide a public comment. Also, when speaking, please make sure to mute your livestream. Please state your name and item you are commenting on before speaking. Are there any members of the public participating through teleconference that would like to comment on any items not on the agenda? Are there any members of the public that have no public comments? Counsel member joining us? Thank you.
We do have one electronic public comment that came in. They didn't leave a name, but the comment reads as regarding press, they'd like to speak regarding press release that went into effect April 1, 2021, and how it affects the First Amendment while driving.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We will be moving with continued items. Public hearing process, each of the hearing items will be conducted in the following manner. Staff will present the project. Commission questions of the staff will be next. Chairman opens the public hearing. Comments of presentations by the applicant, comments from the public, commission questions if any of the applicant or speakers or staff. Chairman closes the public hearing. Commission discusses discussion and then action. All right. Item number 6A for conditional use permit and site development review sunny car wash.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the planning commission and community. My name is Monique Galeney Slater. The project before you is conditional use permit 20-005 and site development review SBR 20-008 for sunny car wash Stetson. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit, approval to construct a 5,580 square foot building consisting of an express car wash tunnel, self-service vacuum stalls outside the tunnel, office building, mechanical area, and customer booth located on One Acre Lot. The applicant is SynArt Studio and the owner is Brandon Choi. At the March 16, 2021, planning commission meeting, this item was continued to this evening's meeting, April 20, 2021, to allow the applicant to provide a noise analysis and work with planning staff on mitigating the commission's concerns with regards to access to the trash enclosure and truck turning radius, a line of sight study from vehicle headlights and the noise for the car wash. So, the applicant has provided in the staff report a memorandum, also with graphical illustrations of weighted sound levels in decibels for the project. The applicant provided additional clarification via email correspondence where there were questions raised based off the information provided. Recent comparable noise impact studies were provided by Sunny Car Wash for surrounding projects that had been approved, one being a noise impact study for Sunny Car Wash in the city of Lake Elsinore and a noise impact study for Sunny Car Wash in the city of Orange. Based on this information, the sound level, decibel, will be approximately 57 decibels at the north property line and less than 51 decibels from the exterior of the apartment complex building to the north, 48 decibels at the west property line outside the exterior of the car wash tunnel and adjacent to the medical offices. This is where the medical offices, where we received a letter of opposition on behalf of the medical offices. And the commission requested that we go back and take a look at that a little bit more. So, based off that, the applicant has indicated that anticipated noise levels at the tunnel exit were shown on the aerial graphic is approximately 65 decibels at the west property line and 60 to 65 decibels along the frontage of Stetson. The anticipated noise level at the east property line adjacent to Auto Zone is approximately 57, as indicated by the applicant. The orientation of the current building configuration serves as a buffer for noise to the adjacent commercial building to the west and the maximum allowable noise community equivalent for commercial and industrial standards for the city. As measured from the property line, your average is 60 to 65 decibels between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and 45 decibels average between 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And this is generally the city standard. And based upon this information, the proposed car wash does comply with the city's noise criteria and would be in compliance. Also, an added condition of approval recommends that the car wash be closed between the hours of 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and that's outlining condition number nine of the conditions of The applicant has revised the site plan and provided a correction. There was a concern with access and truck turnaround, trash pickup. The applicant has corrected the plan, as illustrated here, with the turning radius in compliance with the city standard number R-5038, which requires a 45-degree inside radius and 65 outside radius, as well as clarifying the path of travel for trash truck pickup service. With regards to concerns for headlight spillage into the adjacent apartment complex to the north on the upper floor, a line of sight diagram has been provided illustrating the potential heights to the existing apartment building as measured from the front property line entrance to the second floor window of the apartment complex. This illustration also assumes a headlight height of 2 feet 6 inches above the ground floor. In distant review of the California Vehicle Code, headlights and every light source in any headlamp unit is located at no more than, generally the 4 feet 6 inches is the standard or maximum height. So, given that information, the illustration before you is generally correct and will vary based upon the height of the headlight. The current proposal in our previous discussion was to include screening landscaping along the north property line. The applicant's previous landscape plan identifies Shoestring Acacia as the proposed landscape plan on the north perimeter. On this diagram, it also shows in the red circles the proposed landscape area. In review of the Shoestring Acacia to determine if that was going to be sufficient, although the overall height is sufficient, if you, in review of the illustration to the left, because of the tree trunk height and the narrowness of it, the tree trunk height could create a view corridor, the recommendation would be that the applicant install an Australian willow branch, which would provide greater screening and a much lower canopy height. This is reflected in condition number 10, and the amount of trees would, as recommended, would be based off of the width of the lot as well as the spread at maturity. So, that is the recommendation for screening to minimize line of sight. With regards to the concerns addressed by Mr. Amar Lopsy, Chief Operating Officer of Stetson Group, who represents 430 West Stetson Avenue, the medical office to the west. At the prior planning commission meeting, a response was provided by the applicant. It was then determined by the planning commission to direct staff to reach out to Mr. Lopsy to see if any suggestions could be offered based on concerns expressed. Mr. Lopsy did provide a response, still objecting to the project. However, it was indicated that if the planning, should the planning commission approve the request, that a six-foot block wall separating the property be provided and that staff provide an agreement with the, a private agreement in bond with the applicant to, for the improvements, as well as to provide for traffic control during normal business hours to avoid congestion on Stetson Avenue. Staff forwarded the comments to the applicant for their review. It is recommended that the wall located on the west side of the development be extended to the north, as recommended by the medical offices to the west, and that during the initial six-month period, circulation management be provided by Sunny Car Wash staff while during a normal operation. And this would be reflected in conditions 11 and 12. With these added conditions, staff finds that the applicant has adequately responded to the concerns raised and that the conditions of approval will cover operations, bonding, water quality management, and in completion of the improvements. With that said, staff believes that the project is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act under CECL guidelines Section 15303, Class 3, new construction, and Section 15332, infill, Class 32. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Planning Commission Resolution approving conditional use permit CUP 20-005 and Site Development 20-006, subject to the findings and conditions of approval outlined in the staff report, and to direct staff to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did the applicant agree to the additional wall?
I did communicate with the applicant. They would be in agreement with extending the wall, given that there is potentially an easement or utility easement in that area. So, they just wanted to make it known that there may be the necessity to work with the utility company. The wall may have to job potentially if there is a utility box. I didn't identify one in review of the plan, but should there be any type of easement, that it would need to be worked out with the appropriate utility company.
Monique, I have a couple of questions. Can you go back to the trash, the image with the trash circle? So, what exactly was changed? I don't see the, I see the circle.
So, what they did is they went back and they looked at it a little bit closer. They did have to make some adjustments. They did have to make some adjustments to the plan. They did lose some landscape planner areas. They did lose one of the vacuum stalls to make it work.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Can you go back to the image where you showed, I think it was the first one where you showed the noise levels? Yeah. So, I realize that this, you're saying that this is within city code, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, in order to compare it to something, what is the noise level currently without this car wash in place for those same perimeter notifications? Would you be able to state that?
I don't have that information. What I do know is the typical decibel levels on Stetson Avenue are 65 to 70 during, you know, peak hours or even higher.
Okay. And what's the limit for the code?
For commercial and industrial uses, exterior decibel criteria is 70 decibels. The maximum equivalent noise level from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. is 75 decibels and 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. is 65 decibels.
Okay. Does that include the north perimeter next to the senior center, the senior homes there?
In review, well, in commercial, yes, so 70. So, we do look at the noise levels and we look at the, we call them sensitive receptors. So, the decibels for a residential, they would fall during the day, 65 decibels, and then on the interior would need to be at least 45 decibels. Now, we didn't look at interior decibels. We just made the comparables based on prior noise analysis.
So, you have 57 decibels at that north perimeter right now. And would you say that that's getting close to the limit for that area?
I can, well, I can only indicate that it is in compliance with our standard criteria.
Commissioner, if I can, the chart that I have, it shows that about 60 decibels is equivalent to about a moderate to quiet conversation. So, the number can be deceiving in a sense that the conversation that you and I are having, it's about 60 decibels. So, when you see a number of 57 on a border, it's not something that is truly loud. It's a conversation that you and I would have at that. At 70, you're talking about a vehicle traveling. At 80, it's a truck travel. So, the decibel level numbers could be slightly deceiving if you look at it as in that context.
Okay. Conversation is about 60 and the car is about just 7 decibels. Conversation, car 60 miles an hour. So. I know. I know, but I'm trying to be sensitive to the people that are living there, you know?
And don't forget, we have other car washes next to apartments in other parts of town that haven't had any issues either.
Okay.
And I know there's that fine line because right where that boundary line ends is commercial line and then the residential right across the other line. And so, what is, commercial boundaries is still within the requirement?
Required decibels.
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Monique.
No, he pretty much answered about the decibels.
Any other questions? Let's open this public hearing. Is the applicant of the project present or on teleconference line for any comments?
Hello. I don't know if you can hear me. This is Justin Barth from SynArt Studio. We're the architecture firm. I have no further comments. We just, there were three issues about the line of sight for glare, about the trash turning radii, and the noise levels. And I believe they've both been addressed, as Monique has explained, but if there are any further questions, please do not hesitate to ask.
And also, this is Jefferson, also from SynArt Studio. I just want to add one clarity for the noise issue. The noise is primarily created from the exit of the tunnel, which is facing the street. The noise does not work backwards because the blowers point towards the street. So, then, I don't know the exact decibel level. It is at the residential side. It is significantly less than the noise level of the street.
Thank you. Are there any other questions to the applicant?
I have none.
Regarding public comments, if there are any, anyone attending via teleconference, please be advised that your phone will be muted until such time of public comment. Please be aware that if you are participating through teleconference, you will have to mute your livestream as it causes interference. Are there any members of the public participating through teleconference that would like to comment on this item? Okay. No members, I see no members in the audience. I don't think we've had anyone asked to speak. Were there any ecomments submitted on this item?
No ecomments were submitted for this.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Like to call the hearing? I move that we, that the planning commission adopt the Planning Commission Resolution PC 2021-1 approving conditional use permit CUP 20-005 and Site Development Review SBR 20-008, subject to the findings attachment number one and conditions of approval, exhibit eight, and direct staff to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk.
I'll second.
Motion passed for de zero. All right. We're going to move to item 6B for the zone change of 21-001, rest in zoning consistency.
Good evening. I'll be presenting that tonight. As you're aware of, this item was continued to tonight's meeting. Upon investigating more with Airport Lineers Commission, they do have to have a hearing on this item, and therefore, we're requesting an additional continuance to allow for that to occur. ALAC has their meeting once a month, so that's why we're asking for a longer period of extension. But we will bring it back on the June 15 meeting, and we should have a conclusion from the ALAC meeting.
I move that continue the item to June 15, 2021, to allow time to obtain additional comments from other agencies.
I'll second.
Did you just open that and have comment?
The item is already opened. We just need to make sure that we didn't have any additional comments.
Oh, I apologize. Before we get the vote, are there, are there any comments via teleconference? Okay. As soon as from the audience, please vote. Continue, passes for de zero. Okay. We're on item number 67A, conditional use permit. Santiago RV Park and Walcations, conditional use.
That's not what I have.
I apologize. I put that over. What's that? Okay. We are at. We are at item six B, zone change west end zoning consistency between this.
Seven A.
Now what's wrong to, sorry about that. Again, there we go. Seven A. Condition use correct for PR pizza drive-through.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the planning commission, Monique Galanes-Flader, project planner for conditional use permit twenty-one dash zero zero one. The applicant is Matthew Arfa with AMS Real Estate Services. The owner is Golden State Investment Properties LLC located, the property is located at fifteen thirty-one East Florida Avenue. The project involves a three thousand two hundred and seventy-seven square foot PR Pizza drive-through restaurant, which is formerly the Gus Junior Burger and Burger King location, located on a point-six acre commercial parcel. Proposed operating hours are twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week with modified service times, ten AM to ten PM with walk-in and drive-through and ten PM to ten AM, evening hours, ten PM with just drive-through only. The anticipated employees are three to four per shift. The subject property is located on the frontage of East Florida Avenue between San Jacinto Street to the west and South Gerard Street to the east. Access to the site is provided from Florida Avenue. The pad site comprises of an existing restaurant building with a drive-through. The property maintains a general plan land use designation of community commercial and is zoned C two general commercial. The site improvements include restriping and paving of the parking area, landscaping, new and relocated trash enclosure, relocated menu board and ADA accessible pathway to the sidewalk along the frontage of East Florida Avenue. Historically, outdoor seating has been provided on the north side of the building, a building adjacent to the drive-through and at this time they're not proposing outdoor seating. A total of thirty-one parking spaces is required and including one ADA accessible space. This has been provided. As part of this request, I would like to include a condition that if, should the planning commission approve this evening, that any future outdoor seating include railing as a safety measure, a barrier between the drive-through and the outdoor seating area. The circulation through the drive-through is located on the, the entrance is on the south side of the building via an existing one-way drive-al. It ranges from eleven to twelve feet in width and is legal non-conforming. The minimum drive-al width is twelve feet. The drive-through lane currently wraps around the building in a counterclockwise direction and will provide for stacking of six cars before the menu ordering board. The municipal code does require minimum queuing for no less than six vehicles to the menu board and they have provided this, as illustrated on the plan. Although PR Pizza, the business model offers ready-to-go products, other special orders require food to be placed in the oven upon receipt of the order and if it's not available, then there could be a delay in, in getting the food. But with that, it's recommended that there, there be a designated marked and numbered parking spaces to be reserved for those customers that are waiting for their orders. There may be other cases where you can call in the order. You could go into the restaurant and as long as you're within the hours, you can go in and walk in and do your, and you can, there's a lobby and waiting area that also can provide for, for customers. The applicant has also indicated that PR Pizza staff will utilize a handheld point-of-sale POS system, which is, which they can take outside orders from the customers directly from their car to cut down the wait time and to prevent congestion in, in the drive-through. New and existing landscaping is proposed to be maintained throughout the site and in, around the building, in the parking areas and along the frontage of Florida. There is a minimum criteria, five percent of parking that should be landscaped with live plant materials, including but not limited to trees, shrubs and ground cover. The required landscaping may be in the form of island strips or tree wells. The commercial landscape design guidelines also indicate that landscaping should be provided around the entire base of the structure to soften the edge between the parking lot and the structure, except at the entrance, exits and loading areas. The landscape plan indicates fifteen percent of landscaping has been provided, however, the existing turf landscape area and the, and the overall landscape area currently appears to be sparse and it provides little enhancements to, to the building. A condition of approval recommends that drought-tolerant shrubs be planted within the existing turf planters, where illustrated and highlighted. Given that the existing landscape islands at the end stalls are less than the minimum planer width for a tree, is recommended that replacement shrubs be provided at end stalls and replacement tree to be located within the planters to the west end stalls. Furthermore, the trees located within the planters of the rear parking lot abutting the east property line, where illustrated with arrow, have, have not been maintained over the years and it's recommended that the planer be increased at least to the minimum of four feet to allow for maintenance of a healthy tree or shrub condition and that all landscaping be replaced if, if currently, if dead. And that's the condition number sixteen. There are no changes to the actual architectural form or style of the building, the existing building, but they are including exterior enhancements, including new paint color, trim color at fascia boards, horizontal siding is proposed at the base of the building on the northeast and west elevations, vertical stone veneer on the front entry facade and corrugated steel element veneer at the west elevation. Exterior colors and materials include maintaining the existing red roof and the stucco color is in bare falcon gray and the overall exterior enhancements will incorporate modern elements to the building. The floor plan is generally consistent with the previous layout of the Gus Junior Burger and Burger King site with some minor, minor internal changes. Those items are going to have to be reviewed through the building department in compliance with Title twenty-four. The applicant indicated that at this time that there, there will be no dining area in the interim and has indicated that the space will be utilized as a lobby for customers to wait for their orders. However, they could open up that area for their dining and seating at the time that they determine to be appropriate. The applicant has indicated that drive-through location for the PR, Pizza Piara will include thirty cameras inside, in and out, which will cover every angle of the restaurant. And there is a condition of approval that is recommended that they have this equipment, that the surveillance cameras strategically be positioned to capture persons and vehicles entering and exiting of the businesses, given the hours of operation. Then, and that also that the capability of the, the video for a time period of at least be maintained for a period of at least thirty days. The police department did not express any concerns with the hours of operation and are in agreement with this condition of approval. On April eighth, the city gave notice by advertising in the press enterprise and by mailing to property owners and tenants within five hundred feet to holding of the public hearing and that would be considered by the planning commission. To date, no correspondence has been received from the public. Staff believes that the project is exempt from the California Vermont Quality Act Guidelines section fifteen three oh three, class three, new construction and class sequel guidelines section fifteen three thirty-two, infill class thirty-two. This concludes my presentation. It is recommended that the planning commission adopt planning commission resolution PC twenty twenty-one approving conditional use permit, subject to the findings and conditions of approval outlined in the staff report and to direct staff to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk.
Do you have any questions with staff?
I have no questions.
Open the public hearing? Is the applicant of the project present on teleconference?
Hi, this is Matthew Arfa from AMS Real Estate, Golden Star Investments. And also Sean is on also from PR Pizza, in case there's any questions in regards to the operation of the PR Pizza. I'm here as well. I'm Sean Town from PR Pizza.
Can you question private? No questions. If there's anyone attending by teleconference, please be advised that your phone will be muted until such time as a public comment. Are there any persons on the teleconference that have any questions or comments? Were there any ecomments that were submitted for this project?
No ecomments were submitted for this project.
Right. If there are no other questions, I'll close the public hearing. Commission.
Kind of curious to see how this works. I've never seen a pizza drive-through before.
It's a drive-through. I did have to say to the applicant, I had a very good friend who owned the Arrangement Gallery Forest here in town, who was so anxious to, to do this, a drive-through pizza restaurant, that you're fulfilling his, his hopes that we would have one someday.
Well, there you go. Dreams do come true.
Yes. Yeah. Do you have any? Okay. Put your pointer. Yes. I'd like to, do you have a motion?
I have a motion that the planning commission adopt planning commission resolution approving conditional use permit CUP twenty-one dash zero zero one, subject to the findings and conditions of approval and direct staff to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk.
One second.
Motion passes forward to zero. Thank you. Forward to the end of this. Right. Department reports items for the city attorney.
Yes. Thank you, Vice Chair. As you all may have noticed and as I introduced some of you earlier, my associate Sunny Nguyen is with me today. Sunny is going to be handling planning commission meetings for me on those days when I cannot come. Bit of personal news, I was engaged recently.
Congratulations.
On a balloon over to Mexico.
How romantic.
And we will be getting married in May, so I do need a Tuesday off now. Sunny is kind enough to volunteer to handle the planning commission, which I heard her is the best commission in the city beyond. Fantastic. So you may see a little bit less of me, but no, I am at city hall, working diligently. A little bit about Sunny, I've known her for about three years now. We were lucky enough to snatch her from Best Besting Figure over to our firm and she has been working with the city since the beginning of our contract with the city, primarily assigned to code enforcement, the IT department and the library, and now she'll be in addition to handling planning commission. In addition to taking on these duties at the planning commission, I'm working with the city manager, city staff as well, on some new techniques for code enforcement to address some of the issues that the city's been facing. Sunny has diligently handled those for other communities in Southern California to great success, including Palm Springs and the city of Ontario. So I, I look forward to seeing what she can do here for the good citizens, businesses and residents of him. That, that is our interest. Thank you. Oh, and for the financial minded among you, the firm does write off when there are two attorneys here. So this does not top two double. That is all.
Good to know.
I see a city council member in the stands. I want to make that very clear. We don't just show up just for the fun of it.
Not for the fun and for the billing, right?
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much. Welcome, Sunny, and congratulations to you. All right. Community development reports?
Good evening. The only thing I have for you is that we are planning on having a housing element update workshop on April twenty-ninth. It'll start at, I believe it is six PM. Be scheduled for approximately two hours and you're welcome to join. We just need to make sure that there's not three of you at the same time. I'm sorry? Twenty-ninth of April. Just around the corner.
Question, if, if there were two joining, would someone still get on the line or would that be, that would be still in violation, wouldn't it?
Can you ask the question again?
Well, he said that there were just two of us joining. You'd have to announce, you'd have to publicize a meeting. So, so that would mean joining either online or in person, is that correct?
I, 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 I'm trying to follow the question. I'm sorry.
If there was three commissioners that attended that event, two in person and one on the line.
That's still three.
That's still three, that's still a violation. You have to have just two.
Well, you, you have to be an agenda meeting.
All right, so I don't understand. Are you inviting just one of us to be there? I mean, what's the deal?
No, it is open to all commissioners and all council members, but if you have three commissioners there at the same time, then we will be in violation of the Brown Act.
High five on, on my hearing.
So we just need two representatives from the commissioners and then after the meeting, we can give you the information to all commissioners.
Maybe you could talk amongst yourselves and decide which two of you want to go now. I think was maybe the invitation that was being extended.
I'll go. You want to go? You want to go?
I'll go.
Okay. We got our two.
Well, they want to go, all three of us want to go, but I'll let, Jacob, you take really good notes.
No, that's okay. I'll pass. Go ahead, boy.
You sure?
Yeah.
He's a good note taker.
All right, I'll read his notes.
Okay. All right, then we're going to go.
Okay. We got, we got our two. We'll tell John he can't show up.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that six PM? What time is that on the twenty-ninth?
Six PM.
And will we get an email or do we need to?
Yeah, we'll, we'll send you a Zoom meeting invite.
All right. Future items?
Yeah, we have a couple of different items coming forward. The Rancher Di Amante subsequent EIR item went to council. Council asked that we bring it back to planning commission to look at some of the few issues. So we're bringing that back to you in the future for that. And then we have El Toro Market Express coming back, coming to you for review. It's a market, not a grocery store necessarily, but it's a smaller market, like a corner market style. And we have other projects that are in the, in the works that you'll see much more of in the future. in the future. Um, for planning commissioner reports? Okay. So, Commissioner Hill?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Lampkin? Mr. Beamstuffer? And Vice Chair Van Arce?
Thank you.
All right. It's hard to tell when to have the mouth. I'll have to say something there, but look in her eye. All right. Uh, we are adjourning this meeting.